Oh dear.
It just takes a minute to set up. Right, now live on YouTube, so we are ready to start. Is it 29 minutes past?
10 minutes.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Woodpool Council meeting.
I love to chat.
No, to be honest, I've just realised I have the housekeeping thing to do. And there are a few housekeeping things to note. As with meetings in the town hall, members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak during public participation, but will not be permitted to speak at other times and their microphones will be muted. The clerk has the ability to mute or remove anyone who does cause a nuisance, but of course we hope that this won't be necessary. It is impossible to hear if everyone speaks at once. So that we have some order, I'd be grateful if you could speak one at a time and to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Voting will be by raising your hand. This meeting is being recorded. The first item on the agenda are apologies.
I've got apologies from councillor Anna Sawson, councillor Derek Lawson, councillor David Hamling, councillor Vijay Paul and councillor Peter Thomas.
Right, thank you. Item two on the agenda are declarations of interest. To receive declarations of disposable pecuniary interests and other interests and the nature of those interests relating to items on the agenda. Right, councillor Smithers.
I'd like to declare another interest in item 20, the consultation of public health and to see wellbeing and services.
Thank you. And councillor Jackson.
Item 15, Snowdon Homes offered to use the room for the library. As a member of East Northants District Council, this item will actually be coming to the planning meeting shortly. And as a member of the East Northants Council, will reconsider all matters at the district tier and cannot be banned by any rules expressed herein on any plan items. Thank you.
Councillor Pritmore.
A personal item on item 15, Snowdon Homes. Personal reasons.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Sheila, sorry, councillor Mantle.
Snowdon Homes as well, it's a personal reason. My daughter's a partner of one of the directors, so.
Okay, right. Thank you. That's everybody, yes? Okay. Item three on the agenda are minutes to approve and sign as a record the minutes of the meeting held on the 25th of August 2020. There are copies on page one to page seven of your agenda pack.
If they were signed, madam mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a second please? Thank you councillor Whitehead, all those in favour, will you please show hands? Right, thank you. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the public forum to allow any member of the public to address the meeting for a period of no longer than three minutes. Sandra, have we got anybody waiting to address?
No, we haven't.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is the mayor's announcements. To receive a verbal report from the mayor. Right. On September the 3rd, we raised the Red Ensign to mark Merchant Navy Day and to honour the men and women who have lost their lives at sea. I thank those of you who came to give your support. On the evening of Wednesday the 9th, I was invited by Rotary to unveil the defibrillator which has been sighted outside the carriage moors. I have been asked by Rotary to convey their thanks to you for agreeing to the maintenance and upkeep of the defibrillator. On Wednesday the 16th, I joined a very select group in Castle Fields to unveil the three out benches. Due to the COVID 19 restrictions, this was not the grand occasion that had been planned. Indeed, it was not what the benches deserve. It must have been very disappointing to those involved not to be able to be present. I felt very honoured to be part of the occasion. I hope that many of you have been to see the benches. They have been well received by all ages in the community. Thank you. Item six on the agenda is the town clerk's report to receive a note, the town clerk's report, which is on page eight in your agenda pack. Sorry, Sandra, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I've got two things to add to my report. One of them was the Rushton East report, which I circulated earlier today. I thought you should be aware of what took place in the meeting yesterday. One thing, there's another consultation coming out on Monday on the local plan part two, and they've now decided the Rushton East Master Plan needs to be a development plan document, so will form part of that consultation. Also, it was rather disturbing to hear that councillor Jackson was referred to now as a district council member when he was trying to speak up for high end ferries. That's probably something we need to query with the district council, because if he is there now as a district council, surely the council can have another representative on there. And there's also some query about whether they're going to be able to refuse to have B8s because of whether there's a strong enough case when it comes to being at the public hearing. Mister councillor Jackson may well have other things to add when it gets to report to representatives on other bodies on that one. The other thing this afternoon, you might like to know that I'd had a plan from Northants County Council. They are now planning to put some temporary measures in on the co-op bus lay-by to enable social distancing measures, which includes closing it off and putting in some curbs so that the bus can stop and drop its passengers. I literally got that this afternoon and I did email back to say that the town council found the suggestions acceptable.
Right, thank you. Right. Would somebody propose that we receive the town clerk's report, please? Thank you councillor Jackson. And councillor Whitehead, would you second that? Thank you. And all those in favour, will you please show hands? Thank you. Item seven on the agenda is questions, an opportunity for councillors to ask questions pursuant to standing order nine. Questions must relate to business of the town council and not be related to items of business on the agenda. Every question shall be put and answered without discussion. Has anybody got any question? Councillor Jackson.
Thank you, madam mayor. One item, Station Road, have we approached Earthlingborough regarding what we're going to do? Whether we're having a road closure or weight restrictions? Have we dealt with that yet? I did go down and have a look at it and the highways have in fact repaired our end of the bridge. So they've carried out that work. So it's a question now, are we consulting with Earthlingborough regarding that?
I was waiting for them to come back with some meeting dates, so I will chase them on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? In that case, we'll move on to item eight on the agenda, which is reports of representatives to other bodies. To receive reports from councillors on meetings they have attended as representatives to other bodies. Councillor Jackson, are you wishing to report at this point?
No, I shall go on the item nine.
Okay, thank you. Right, but councillor Gardiner, you have something you wish to say?
Yes, thank you. This month, I attended my monthly walk around and discussion with PCSO Stephanie Bacon. We had our usual walk around high end ferries and we discussed the emails and the situation at parking around the Henry Chitley School area, in particular at school lane, and the email she has had regarding parking. She has also offered to assist in any discussions to help move this along, obviously via Zoom. But the clerk is already in discussions with the school, but she is offering to help move this forward in any way that she can. There was a garage fire also earlier this month. This is being investigated. CCTV has captured images of youths that are being troublesome at the moment, but this is being looked into. Thank you very much. The second one is I attended the NCALES discussion on the white paper planning for the future. It was very well attended. There was representatives from Thrapstone, Raunds, even coming from the Leicestershire area. So, and we all discussed the concerns about the white paper and how will it affect local levels. And I'll come in on agenda item 12 to give you an update on the list that was put together at that discussion. Thank you councillors.
Thank you councillor Gardiner. Item nine on the agenda is reports from district councillors and county council. It's an opportunity for council to receive reports from the ward district councillors and the county councillor. Right, councillor Jackson, you'd like to make.
Thank you. At the Rushton East meeting, I was reprimanded for speaking out about the area of land allocated for B8s and suggesting it would be more suitable elsewhere, such as alongside a trunk road or and/or rail line. And this proposal is neither. The reply was that the A45 is a trunk road. I'm afraid we face an uphill struggle to reduce this area. Although Rushton councillors claimed to be against the proposal, we have to remember it was Rushton councillors who decided they did not want large sheds near their executive houses. So the Rushton East plan was enlarged to include for more of high end ferries to enable them to put the B8s and employment in that area. So I feel we are going to have to look at this very closely, because otherwise it's just going to be pushed through regardless. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Smithers, do you wish to say anything to us?
Nothing to say, madam mayor.
Right, thank you very much. Right. Item 10 on the agenda is finance 10.1, to approve accounts for payment as at the 29th of September 2020, which is on pages nine and 10 in your agenda pack.
I think councillor Penland wanted to say something.
Oh, sorry. I can't see.
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, I thought it was a list here there. Sorry, Harriet, sorry, would you like to say something for us?
Yeah, please, just a succinct report for you, Karen, with the other business. And just wanted to report back on the work I've been doing in relation to the Shadow Unitary Authority, which might be of interest. We have, I've been part of a working party that has been in the process of designing the logo for the new Unitary Authority, which has been put out to consultation, which recently finished. And that was an interesting process to find out what people wanted on that. And we've also been working with key stakeholders in terms of communication for the process of transitioning to the new authority. And so working with council staff and other local councils, which has been really interesting and very important in ensuring that everybody knows what's happening and is on board with the process. And then more broadly, in terms of my work, been emailing local residents and involved with planning applications, which are all well aware of the local ones. So I'll leave my report there. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you very much, Harriet. Right, now we'll go on to item 10 on the agenda. To approve the accounts for payments as of 29th of September 2020, on pages nine to 10. Has everybody had a chance to check the payment proposals for the 29th? Could I have a proposal then, please? Thank you councillor Whitehead, a second. Councillor Jackson, all those in favour, will you please show hands? Right, thank you. 10.2 is to prove the bank reconciliation as of the 31st of August 2020. Has anybody got any questions? Can we have a proposal, please? Thank you councillor Smithers, a second, councillor Gardiner, all those in favour, will you please show hands? Thank you. And 10.3 is to receive a note, the budget report as of the 29th of September. Came out yesterday. Have we got a proposal that we receive the report? Thank you councillor Gardiner, and seconded by councillor Whitehead, all those in favour, will you please show hands? Right. Thank you. Right, item 11 on the agenda of committee meetings, 11.1, to receive and adopt the minutes of the following committees. The Planning and Development Committee, held on the 15th of September 2020, which is on pages 11 and 12 of your agenda pack, and councillor Gardiner is going to present the minutes.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. To receive the minutes of the Planning and Development Committee, held on Tuesday the 15th of September. Can I have a proposal, please? Thank you councillor, thank you. Okay, I'm going to take you straight down to 5.1, which was to consider the responses of. So it's 20-00992-FUL, which was the two-storey and single-storey extensions, which incorporates new garage and demolition of existing garage and link extensions at six Swan's Way High Enferries. And this was resolved that the no objections be made and the council advised that they support the comments from the head of Transport, Highways and Infrastructure with regard to the provision of a construction management plan and the requirement for sufficient parking spaces in accordance with NCC standards document. And if you go over the page, you will see a list of resolves and items to report, which councillor O'Rourke, items to report was the sign of the cul-de-sac and this was addressed. And the next date of the meeting is the 13th of October. Do I have any questions before ask adoption? Now, in that case councillors, I move adoption of these minutes.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favour, will you please show hands? Right, thank you. 11.2 is Environment and Recreation Committee, held on the 15th of September 2020, which is found on pages 13 and 14 in your agenda pack. And councillor O'Rourke, you're going to present these minutes.
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to receive the minutes for the Environment and Recreation Committee meeting, held on the 15th of September via Zoom. Go on to item five, high pressure washing and muss treatment of the tennis courts. Resolve to recommend that the council enter a three-year contract for the annual provision of high pressure washing and muss treatment of the tennis courts and MUGA at a cost of £12.80 per annum, subject to the clerk's satisfaction that the pressure washing will not cause damage to the new MUGA surface and that works will not affect any warranties to the new surface. There's also item six, the Greenway, King's Meadow, Rams Maintenance to the Boundary Land. Resolve that the following scheduled pass clearance works by Northants Highway. The committee members who so wish undertake a site visit with the clerk to review the issues in advance of the November meeting. I think that's all really everything that's on the list, so we've got someone to second to adopt those minutes.
Now, can we have the recommendation voted on?
Oh yeah, sorry, I beg your pardon. Yeah. The.
High pressure washing.
Yeah, yeah, well, I've got the high pressure one. Do you want to vote on that?
Yeah, you need to vote because it's a recommendation, so.
So if you have a vote that we propose to enter a three-year contract, as said earlier. You have a second for that?
Councillor Jackson, who's seconded it. All those in favour, will you please show hands?
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Has everybody, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes.
And then can we have a draft?
For that, so can adopt those minutes, please?
Councillor Gardiner is seconding it. And all those, councillor Gardiner, all those in favour, will you please show hands? Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll look to sign those and then return them to the Terry Hall tomorrow.
Don't need to sign them because they're signed off at the next committee.
Okay then.
Thank you. Item 12 on the agenda is the consultation government white.
Tina, you managed to mute yourself. Right at the beginning of that, you managed to mute yourself, Tina.
Can't get it to unmute.
There we go.
Right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So item 12 on the agenda is consultation government white paper, planning for the future. To agree a response to the consultation on the white paper, planning for the future, which is on pages 15 to 25 in your agenda pack. So, Sandra, would you like to talk about this?
It's a massive piece of white paper and there's a summary produced thankfully by now. I would say the concern has to be that a lot of the power has been taken away locally and made centrally, because you will get pockets of land that are virtually given carte blanche to build whatever on. But I know councillor Gardiner has read this paper and also attended an NCALES session on it, so I should, I would probably best to hand over to her. But what I'm looking for is some guidance on how you want to respond to this. I had sort of given some initial comments on it. And you don't have to answer every question and we have got up to the end of October to answer it in full.
Okay, right, thank you. Councillor Gardiner, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, please. Okay, thank you very much. Some key points that came out of the discussion, and I'll read them as follows. One of the highlights was nothing replaces local knowledge. And this again goes back to what the clerk was saying about carte blanche to do what anybody wanted with pockets of land. A duty to cooperate. Are we just as councillors then, have a duty to cooperate with officers? That came out of it. Digital technology, the push for using phones to access planning. So one of the ones that was described where you can take an iPhone, for example, over an old building and you can superimpose planning, it's very popular in London and larger cities. How would that be coming down to our local level and who would pay for such technologies? A good point that everybody was really pleased about, which was less negotiation time for 106 minutes or whatever, you know, that local councils was talking about. And for community engagement, even though it was welcomed, community engagement was welcomed, each council that was represented recognised the struggle it is to get community on board with ideas and incentives. And to have people from the different walks of life and in their community to come together and talk about major planning applications that would affect them. The other one was negotiating with community over how to spend 106 minutes. And we agreed that there should be a monetary cutoff point at that stage. Somebody cited an example, I tried not to laugh, but somebody cited an example of a swimming pool. If somebody wanted a large swimming pool and they wanted to get 100 members of the community to push the council for a swimming pool, with the push on community, would they be duty bound to listen and give it airtime? So that was the good and the bad and ugly of it really. And people, the councillors, the most thing was to come out was not being okay with the idea of having local plans being overridden by a more centralised blanket approach. So that was the most major concern.
Councillor Redding.
Thank you, madam mayor. Obviously, I would have read in great detail the whole original bits of paper, but one or two things that come out. One was the fact that there would be very little, if any councillor, in other words, elected representatives making comments. It would be done by officers. If we go back to last month, or earlier this month rather, that would have meant that the Rushton Gateway application would have gone through, because that was actually, it was mentioned the officers suggested that it should be approved. And it was the councillors on the planning committee there who actually threw it out. Obviously, it will come back at some stage. And the other one, which I thought was actually a very good idea, was the fact that 106 money would not be down to officers negotiating. It would be done fairly, as far as I was concerned, across the country. In other words, if you put four houses up, you would pay X amount. If you put 40 houses up, you pay whatever. And it would be levelled across the country. We wouldn't be relying on the negotiating skills of some of our officers. And we know from the past, certainly from East Northants, and I've got no problem saying this out in public, their negotiating skills have been quite pathetic in the past. So I think that side of it was very good, but the big concern is this thing about officers and basically doing the planning and the elected representatives not having anything to say about it.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson.
Thank you, madam mayor. Page 68, delivering change, how we move to the new system. It is most important that a new system doesn't hold up existing projects in progress. However, it is important that the cost of planning and operating these new systems should be borne by the beneficiaries of planning, gains by the landowners and developers, rather than the taxpayer. That's the one most important thing we needed, because such as the Rushton Gateway, nobody was prepared on the, obviously developer side, pay for any improvements to Northampton Road, which obviously needed. And likewise, if you think of the recent application we had for the Football Association, the Newton Road is a very narrow road. It's also already designated as HGV for the energy park. And yet, they did not consider that they should actually spend any money on putting a pavement on even, so that children go into the special needs school, if they go out to the, and want to walk along the road, they have to walk along the main road or the road where lorries are running along. So it is time that we made certain that all these monies that they claim are going to be claimed by the developers and also the lift in value of land. Because as we know, the Dutchy, I don't suppose they paid very much of their land whatsoever. So it is most important that we make certain they do supply this land, the money, and it is spent on the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I propose that we ask councillor Gardiner and sorry, councillor Smithers, did you want to come in there?
Yeah, I was just wanted to ask a couple of questions, being Angela's been to the NCALES presentation on this. I just wanted to get a view of, obviously, there was a few people there, just to sort of get the flavour of the room really. So what was NCALES given opinion of the five-year land supply, Angela, with all of this planning for the future white paper? And how does that proposal sort of restrict sort of strategic planning and moving forwards as we head into the new two-tier local government schemes?
NCALES view, and they facilitated this discussion. So they kept their view of it quite down to a minimum. So they kept their view of it quite down to a minimum. They had, the first opener was a list of questions to get the discussion rolling. And it was how this was going to come down to the very, very local level. So although I completely understand and recognise we have unitary and everything coming, this discussion was very much based on how it would be interpreted at the parish level, the town level. Do you see what I mean? It wasn't necessarily thought about for the unitary. It was how councillors at our local planning level was going to respond to it and how it would be interpreted at our level. And that was one of the concerns about how, for example, we're talking about the five-year land supplies, and we were talking about the digital aspect of everything. But how would that come down to a very localised level for some of them that didn't have as many residents as we do, perhaps less than 3,000 or 2,000 residents? That was where ENCAL was going with this discussion.
Yeah, okay. So I mean, they had covered the five-year land supply, and you felt comfortable that from a perspective of a town or parish council, they were going to be listened to?
None of the councillors were confident that they were going to be listened to. That was part of the discussion, that they were hoping that we would be listened to in the long run, and that's why ENCAL was so determined to concise this in order to get these questions answered. And it was a massive concern with a lot of the councillors.
I think this is just, I mean, if I may, I think this is just a kickback of years of ineffective planning ability, I think. And I think it's government's frustration with local authorities holding up the building of housing. And I think central government are wanting houses. They need, they required, you know, they've said how many we're needing in this area alone. And across the country, it's mammoth amounts. And I think the general opinion is, is that local authorities are slowing up that process. And I think they're trying to look to streamline the way that applications are granted. And I think it's going to be an interesting time, but I think ultimately, government will win the day. And right or wrong, I think time will only be telling us that, and that will be the best judge of all of that. But I thank you for that, Angela. Most useful.
Okay. Can I suggest that we ask Angela and a small group to actually consult with Alicia and Sandra to do the response? Is that something that we could do? Sorry, everybody seems to be on mute. Is anybody?
I was going to suggest, I mean, I'm quite happy, I mean, I've got a lot of comments from you today that I could fill into the questionnaires and then circulate it certainly to councillor Gardner, who's been on this session and is also Chair of Planning. And everybody else who wants to read it and sort of feedback, so we can come up with a view that we send off. I mean, I get the general consensus that people are worried about the loss of local input into the planning system.
Yes, yes. So can we propose that that you and councillor Gardner get together to fill in the questionnaire on our behalf, but you'll circulate it before you send it?
Yeah, I mean, councillor Smith has had his hand up. I don't know if he had anything else to say, or he was.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up a little bit of what you said there, Sandra. I think there will be an element of loss of control of planning anyway when the unitary's coming, because the unitaries will be looking at North Northamptonshire as a whole. And it's funny enough, I was in a meeting only today, funny enough, about that, with the planning aspect of the unitaries moving forward. And the interesting discussion about that was, you know, how do we localise planning decisions? So, you know, if we've got, you know, deciding something on 20 homes in High and Ferres, do we want people from Corby and Ketcharn making those decisions? And how do we look to maybe regionalise planning committees within those within those unitary models? So, yeah, it's interesting times.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson, would you like to say something?
Thank you. Councillor Smith has mentioned that they're concerned that local planning is holding up the construction of houses. Allegedly, it is stated that over a million houses have actually got planning. And of course, they're blaming the actual developers, saying they're quite happy just trickling the houses in, because that way they can keep the prices up. It would be interesting to find out who is telling the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. Right.
I think, so you've got a proposal.
Yeah. Could I have a second for the proposal that councillor Gardner and Sandra consult and fill in the form for us, and then they circulate it before they send it? That's the proposal. Have I got a second for that? And councillor Brown, and all those in favour, would you please show hands? Thank you. That's everybody. Thank you. Item 13 on the agenda is to review the community plan, to consider whether to undertake a project to review and update the community plan, which is on page six in your agenda pack.
This was something that came out of Policy Resources back in August to look at our neighbourhood plan and also the community plan. I mean, the community plan especially is quite a bit outdated, I would suggest now. And it was always something that fed our action plan, or the town council's action plan going forward, and what they were going to work on. And it's perhaps something you do need to perhaps look at, trying to direct the council over the next sort of five years on where they want to go. I mean, we've already talked about climate change, for example, that could all come into it, as well as the planning and what services and facilities you want to deliver or update in the future.
Right, thank you. Councillor Smithers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I think what might be a good idea, Sandra, is just maybe defer this for a while, because we're six months away from these unitary councils coming to plan. And I understand there is a working party that's on vision, community and vision and community engagement. So that might be something that's a bigger part of the picture. And it might be worth to see where we go with that on the unitary front, that where we could dovetail into that and sort of, you know, maybe there may be funding coming through, you know, for various projects. So it might be worth sort of looking at that once the unitaries are set up and the council's in place after, or post April 1st.
Yeah, okay, that's, I'm happy with that, yeah.
Okay, so the proposal, councillor Smith, is to delay it until the unitary has taken place?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Councillor Smithers, was that a proposal?
Yes, that can be taken as a proposal. I would use a different word than delay. I would say look to engage after or post 1st of April, because there may be opportunities that come to light after that.
Okay. Could I have a second for that, please? Councillor Jackson and all those in favour, would you please show hands? Right, thank you. Item 14 on the agenda is to review the neighbourhood plan, and to consider whether to undertake a project to review the neighbourhood plan, which is on page 27, 28 of your agenda pack. Sandra, did you want to have a talk about this one?
Yeah, the same sort of question came up, because really, you should be looking at these every five years, even though they're there, it's there for a much longer period. Because things like the planning policy, national planning guidance changes, and there might be areas we can tighten up on, but it is a more formal process than doing the community plans for it to carry weight. I just wonder now, with all the proposed changes to the planning system, whether it's something we should also defer? Because obviously, if we do it now and then everything changes, it's going to be outdated quite quickly.
Okay. Councillor Gardner?
We talked about this in the discussions, and a lot of councils, if they haven't already completed their neighbourhood plans, were actually in the same process when council was like, and just, just a stone's throw of getting to the finish line, and already thinking, hang on a minute, we're going to be out of date before we started. So I completely agree with this one, clerk. And I would propose on the same lines of we did for the last agenda item, just defer for that six months until we know what's happening going forward.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead?
I was just going to second that, Madam Chair. I think it's a good idea, plus the fact if we have to wait until May, I mean, given the circumstances, then we'll probably have got a new council, and it'd be nice to get some new ideas.
New ideas, right, thank you. All those in favour, would you please show hands? Right, thank you. Item 15 on the agenda is Snowdon Homes' offer of community room. Consider a response to the letter from Snowdon Homes, offering use of a room as a community room, which is on pages 13 and 31 in your agenda pack.
I think I'm going to put councillor Mantle into the waiting room for that, because she's got a relative who's related to one of the directors. And I think, to be clear, she shouldn't be in the room.
Okay, that's fine. Have we got, are we quorum it on this one, Sandra? If we've got three people who have declared an interest, and there's all those people who are actually.
You have to have six to be quorumed, and it depends whether, how much they're interested. If they've just declared an interest and they're still taking part in the vote, they're part of the quorum. And it's not clear what councillor Prigmore's interest is, whether it means he's going to take part in the discussion or vote or not.
I instructed, I instructed him to send a letter, because they contacted me and because I felt that maybe we should be discussed at council level and decided that way. So I actually instructed him to offer contact to the council as he did.
So I don't then feel that's such an interest, that means you can't take part in the vote, because any councillor could be speaking to a resident on an issue and suggests that's what they do.
Yeah.
I wish your mind is open to the debate on which way we go.
Always.
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Jackson?
Jolly, I've already declared an interest that I, this will be coming up at a meeting, but I have declared that I won't be forming an opinion until I actually go to the East Northants. So am I not allowed to speak on this?
Yeah, and also, we're not talking about planning issue really on this, it's a separate issue. And also, in your role as a district councillor, I would say that's not an interest that would make you not take part in the vote.
Precisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody like to open the discussion then? Councillor Jackson?
Yes, well, this is why I wanted it. I myself feel that we should take advantage of this offer. Let's face it, it's not a large sum of money that they are proposing that we pay. I can see lots of advantages. Plus, you're not committing yourself to an endless expenditure, because you have an opt-out clause if you wish. So my own personal viewpoint on this one is that, yes, we take advantage of this offer and possibly form some work party to discuss how we're going forward and who is going to benefit from this room.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make any comment? Thank you, councillor Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there are lots of questions that need to be asked. And I agree with councillor Jackson, the fact that perhaps a small working party would need to be made up to put on these questions forward and perhaps a Zoom meeting with Snowdon Homes. So a discussion could take place on terms for both sides. And of course, any lease agreement would have to be looked into properly and who gets what and why. And I think all these questions need to be asked. And my proposal is that a small working party is put together, along with the clerk, in order to investigate and explore this one to its fullest.
Thank you. Anybody like to make comments? Councillor Redding?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I agree, this is not, it's not going to, we could agree tonight to say that we will, in fact, we'll look at it. Obviously, we've got a problem of what it might cost. One question, I know Sandra, I think Sandra pushed around a notice from Rawns. If I remember right, did they not get some money very recently from NCC to run a similar project? In which case, why haven't we been offered that? Or is that, is that something we can ask for?
I think, I don't know if councillor Smith has to comment, but that, what went round in that leaflet hasn't been verified, I would say.
Right.
Thank you. Councillor Smithers, who'd like to come in?
Yeah, absolutely. The leaflet that was presented by Rawns Town Council is factually very incorrect. And, yeah, I wouldn't give it any credence at all. Basically, what we have agreed with Rawns is that we will continue to fund the library whilst there's a viable party option there. They've used, obviously, the Covid pandemic to slow processes down, which is obviously very understandable. But they're in no different position to where we are, where we were. The library will be closed and sold if they don't get a working party able to run it. So they've been given no money apart from, you know, a period of grace like we got to run the library whilst we could get together a working group, a party, or whatever we called it, working library group, party. So, yeah, the leaflet they put out was factually incorrect. And there has been a rather strong-worded letter sent to them from the place director this week, just, oh, last week, sorry, it would have been, or no, it was this week, actually, highlighting our discontent.
Right, thank you. There is a proposal on the table. Sorry, councillor Whitehead?
No, I was just going to say, Madam Sheriff, councillor Gardner's made a proposal, and I'll be happy to second that. I think it's a decision that we need to look at. We can't make a decision tonight.
No, thank you. Right, all those in favour of forming a small party to actually liaise with Snowdon Homes and look into it further, would you please show hands?
Can I have some volunteers then?
Yeah.
Yeah, quick, then, hands went down.
Right, so the actual proposal has been carried.
Sorry, yeah.
So who would like to go on the working party?
I'd be happy to join that, Madam Mayor.
I've got councillor Jackson, councillor Prigmore with their hands up, and councillor Spencer.
And there's someone waving to the left of Harriet Pentland there.
I know, Harriet's cat would like to join, yes. I'm happy to go on.
Are you going to be involved or not?
Sorry?
Councillor Gardner proposed it, is she planning to be involved?
I would think so, yes.
But I've got four people, so I think that's.
That's fine, yeah.
Can we have four? Because that doesn't give us a vote.
Can you tell us who they are, please?
Councillor Jackson, councillor Prigmore, councillor Gardner, and obviously, plus myself. And that is plenty.
I'm happy to go on if you need.
If you need another one, I'm quite happy to go.
I mean, all you're going to do is explore the options and then come back with a recommendation to the council with all the details.
Yeah, I think we need to know as well if we've actually got a library voluntary group anymore, because I don't think we have at the moment, have we? So that is something that we need to investigate as part of this process.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Right, item 16 on the agenda is increase in dedicated wildflower area in the churchyard, to agree to increase the dedicated wildflower area in the churchyard, managed by the Friends of St Mary's Church and St Mary's Church eco team. We've had a letter, it's on page 32 to 35. We've had a letter from Brenda Lofthouse and then some photographs of what was available, what we could see this year, and also the area where they'd like to increase it. Has anybody got any comments they'd like to make on this? Councillor Redding?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't see any reason why we should prevent this. I think they're welcome to, as far as I'm concerned, to go ahead with that. I don't think it's our permission. Do they not need a faculty to do that? I don't think it's our permission. Do they not need a faculty to do that? I can't remember. But it's not going to cost us anything, except maybe a few pence if they want some bulbs.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson?
Well, considering we actually pay, I believe we pay to cut the grass, surely we should be having a slight reduction in the grass cutting cost rather than paying out money.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. But would anybody like to second what councillor Whiting's proposed? Councillor Gardner, all those in favour, would you please show hands? Right, thank you. Item 17 on the agenda is the Christmas Sparkle 2020. To receive and note the minutes from the events working party meeting held on the 21st of September 2020. Has anybody got any questions on the, the minutes of the agenda? In that case, can I propose that we receive the minutes? Could I have a second, please? Councillor Jackson and all those in favour, would you please show hands? Right, thank you. Right, 17.2 is to confirm the plans for the alternative sparkle, which is on page 39 in your agenda pack. Has anybody got any questions on this proposal? No. Sandra, do you want to speak about it at all?
No, I think the working group discussed it and are in favour of it. We've, we've certainly got the money available for this, including we've got some sponsorship. And I think we've just got to do our utmost to make sure the town looks pretty over Christmas because we can't really do much else.
Thank you. So could I propose that you confirm the plans for the alternative sparkle? I think in fact it was the alternative, alternative, so we had several lots. So we confirmed these plans for the alternative sparkle 2020. Could somebody second that for me? Thank you, councillor Whiting and all those in favour, would you please show hands? Thank you. And 17.3 is to dedicate authority to the clerk to spend within the approved sparkle budget of £4,000. Obviously, there is a cost involved in this and we have got some sponsorship. It is still going to, to have some cost to us. For instance, for the lights for the Christmas tree. But I'm assured by Sandra that we've actually got the money in the budget. It's just allocating it slightly differently to what we normally do. So could we delegate authority to the clerk to spend within the approved budget? Could I have a second for that, please? Councillor Redding, are you seconding it for me? Thank you. All those in favour, would you please show hands? Thank you. Item 18 on the agenda is the Covid-19 working party. To receive and note the minutes of the Covid-19 working party, which was held on the 1st of September, on pages 40 and 41 in your agenda pack.
All I would say on that, we obviously main focus was the Remembrance Day, but you'll see from later in the agenda, we've actually gone from that plan.
Absolutely.
And it might even go further, yeah.
Yes.
Councillor Smithers has got his hand up.
Councillor Smithers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Covid, I just want to sort of get a broad brush sort of picture of what we're doing as a corporate entity, as a town council to support staff through this process because something's come to light, you know, in local authorities that a lot of staff that have been working remotely have found themselves being quite distant and have suffered, you know, let's say, mental health issues due to this. I just wanted to make sure that we've got a robust sort of structure in place that would identify if a member of our staff was, was struggling in that way. And that we've got a plan to be able to assist as well if need be, if we need to step in, get the relevant type of, you know, support for that individual we've needed.
I would hope that any of our staff would speak to somebody, I mean, if not to Sandra as the line manager, to Pam or to another councillor that would sort of bring it forward to alert us to the problem. But, but Madam Mayor, it's not, it's not good enough to just expect a member of staff to bring it to you. They may feel they can't. So we need to be looking for signs and so on within their normal working patterns that they may be struggling. And that, that's the general point of what I'm trying to get to there is that do we have systems in place to understand that if the staff are struggling
with the isolation side of their working life?
Without going into too much detail, yes, we have. Especially during lockdown when we weren't in the office at all, yes, we had more regular Zoom meetings. We have had some wellbeing meetings, myself and Pam with a couple of members of the staff. And I, I mean, now we're in two days a week with another person. Hopefully, it would be picked up by that other person as well. I am quite conscious of that. If we have issues, I would then have to take HR advice. But we haven't got, I suppose, as a council, any sort of wellbeing support external to the council. That would be the only thing I would say we haven't got for anybody. And it's perhaps something if the council wish, I can look into whether we can get that so they have somebody totally independent of the council that they can speak to, to get help if they need to. But it's one thing I am certainly quite aware of that lockdown is very difficult for some people. And I, I mean, especially those people who've had to try and juggle homeschooling and work at the same time. I, you know, to me, I haven't got young children at home anymore. I've got hats off to them. So I would hope.
I guess I think where we're going with this, Sandra, it's just that, you know, as...
I know, I know.
Yeah, we need to be sure that we, we've got those checks and balances in place because heaven forbid if something terrible was to happen to one of our members of staff and it came out that we had no support network there for them and no facility to offer them any sort of help. I think we would probably be found in a bit of a precarious position as a, as a corporate entity, wouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah, I do agree. And it's perhaps something we need to look into some more external support, external from inside. But I do think, I mean, we certainly have some wellbeing checks. And certainly when we were all in lockdown, we had no weekly Zoom meetings and we still sort of, we have a WhatsApp group as a, as just as the staff as well to try and support each other. But I do accept that we probably need to look at some external support and I think...
I think external expert support, isn't it, is probably where we need to be going. Expert support, people that can identify these traits within a member of staff if need be.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Whiting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would just like to rest assured to the rest of the council that the town clerk has got everything well in hand in the office. It's been watched very, very carefully. We are going to put some more place, things in place to protect the staff when they're in there. We've got the video doorbell so they don't have to answer the door now. If they're in there on their own, they can just look at the video, they can answer through the, on the door. It's imperative that if any councillors do need to go into the town hall, that they do so by appointment preferably and wear a mask when you go in and sanitize your hands. We're taking every precaution we can for the staff inside. And I know the town clerk is keeping a very watchful eye on all the members of staff. Any problems, they go straight to Sandra and that's fine. And if there's any problems there, Sandra will ring me and we'll discuss it. So rest assured, everything possible is being done for all the members of staff.
I think I know where, as well, where councillor Smithers is coming from, it's more mental issues.
Yeah.
Stress and things like that as well.
Thank you. Councillor Smithers, you ought to come back?
Yeah, I'd just like to come back with what the leader said there. Leader, I get what you're saying and where you're coming from. Regardless, councillors coming into the office, there's no legal requirement for a town councillor to enter that office at the moment and shouldn't be. Secondly, as Sandra's just alluded to, I was referring more to the, the mental state of people's ability to cope with this. And there's not a single person here, to my knowledge, who is absolutely trained to deal and recognise those signs. And as an employer, as a corporate employer, we, we are responsible for the mental health of those individuals and we need people there of expert qualification that can identify that type of thing. It's no good saying that the clerk has done this, that and the other by her very own points. Just a while ago, she has asked that, that we do look to do this. And it's, it's obviously something that needs to be done urgently. And I think it would just further support what the clerk, or the excellent work the clerk is already doing and just covers us as a corporate entity because ultimately, at the end of the day, we would be liable.
Councillor Smithers, I understand exactly what you're saying. But how can somebody who doesn't know the members of staff know whether they're having mental issues or not without them being able to speak about it? And are you saying that they need to have this impartial person, an impartial person to speak to?
Absolutely. I think there needs to be someone who is impartial to the employer's side of things. And I mean, the clerk's obviously picked up on this and she knows what she needs to do. So I don't think, there's no any point in dragging this out, Sandra. I mean, you're happy with where you are with this and, and I think you've identified that we do need something here. And I would suggest that we sort of move on if everyone is happy to.
Yes, I prefer not to go too much into staff discussion in a public meeting. But I know where councillor Smithers is coming from and there is things that are being offered to us as the council. But obviously, there is a cost implication and we have got personnel next week. So we can certainly look at that meeting.
Okay, right, thank you. We'll move on from there then. Do we need a proposal to, yes, we need a proposal to receive and note the minutes of the Covid-19 working party? So could somebody, you're going to propose it, Tony? Could we have a second, please? Councillor Gardner and all those in favour, would you please show hands? Right, thank you. Item 19 on the agenda is plans for Remembrance Sunday to receive and note feedback from the Remembrance meeting held on the 24th of September. So Sandra, would you like to talk about this?
Yeah, obviously, at the Covid working party, we were looking at Plan B. Well, we're now on to Plan C and if not on to Plan D, it is going to be a very cut-down service. We are going along the Remember at Home, we're going to be discouraging members of the public from turning up. The British Legion, who we meet with and the church are very supportive of the line we're going at because I have reminded them that it is the council ultimately has to risk assess this event and is insurance, public liability insurance for this event. We're looking at not having all the wreath layers laying at the same time and subject to further guidance on how many we can have. We'll probably be reading out the list of those who've fallen and having the, the council wreath layers and the main uniform wreath layers or the other groups and schools, et cetera. We'll probably have a time session when they can lay their wreath and we will photograph it and then do a montage to go out on actual Remembrance Day. And I think the church are looking at doing a service that they can broadcast like they do the normal church services as well. We've got another meeting on the 22nd of October because obviously, things are changing all the time. We've already advised wreath layers that there will be something but to watch this space. And we will be starting to put out some publicity now to encourage people to remember at home, probably step out their door at 11 o'clock and have their minute silence, just like you said, the carers, that, that type of thing. But we just cannot have the crowds that we normally get at Remembrance Service in the market square. And to facilitate that, it might be we have to employ some stewards because we will obviously barrier off the, our area of control. And we may, and we may even have to discourage councillors from being at the service or actually perhaps them being there to help marshal the event because I'm probably even looking at just mayor, deputy mayor, mayor sergeant and myself from the council side being in the formal part of it. And I know it's a shame, but that is unfortunately the way we're going to have to go this year.
Councillor Rock, you'd like to say something?
I just wanted to say, as regards people coming to view, I was speaking to someone in the town today and they were saying about the Remembrance Service and I said, well, we're going to be encouraged for people to actually view from home rather than, you know, but they got the impression, oh, well, we will come along, we can still come along and have a look. I said, no, I said, need to be viewing from home. We don't want people around the market square. So this was a business person. So I think it might be a good idea to, as regards posters, to go around the town, especially the businesses, to inform people to, you know, view it from home.
Yes.
We will be doing that, but also we will bury it in such a way that even if they turn up, they will be stood quite afar away. And I know it'll look really empty, but to keep them away is, and so they're not in our control. Councillor Smithers has got his hand up.
Councillor Smithers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if you've had any thought to the process, but a good workaround could be that if you livestream the event on, on YouTube like we are now with this Zoom meeting and we speak and engage with the local pubs and places where everyone tends to congregate after the Working Men's Club and the Carriage House and the Green Dragon and all those types of places. So we actually livestream it and they tune into it in these places. So people do have a place that they can go socially distanced, obviously, and see the proceedings live from the town council. Quite a simple process, obviously. It needs a tablet, you know, with Zoom on there. Livestreaming like you are, you'll get a connection probably from the town hall's data. And that possibly could be a workaround to getting people to be able to watch it. And of course, you could put that out on the, on the newsletters and people from home could sit there and watch it as well. So there's, there's that possibility, I guess. I mean, I don't know if you've had a chance to sort of look at that, Sandra?
We did talk about livestreaming. We're, I mean, we will have to test it. I think we're worried about the stability of the signal out to be able to livestream it at the same time. I mean, we are going to film it so it can go out late, later. Especially, we were thinking of putting something out on the actual Remembrance Day, which I think is Wednesday that week. But we will have to test it. It's a signal issue.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a router, I mean, if you get the IT guys to make you a super extended ethernet cable and bring out the router, sort of maybe laid behind the, the War Memorial. So it's very close to where your device is. You wouldn't have a signal issue there, I don't think. Because obviously, it'd be very close and it's a very small router you could get and facilitate that. Unfortunately, we don't have 5G in Hainault Ferris. But sorry, Tony couldn't resist that. But, you know, you could, you could use an ethernet cable to a router outside the premises and ethernet cables can run up to 400 metres. They're pretty good.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you could do that and livestream it, but engage with the local public houses and clubs and so on to say, look, and members of the public can watch it at home. All you need to do is tune in on YouTube, on the computer, live TV, you know, TVs do it all now. And I think that would be an absolute opportunity that would be missed if you didn't look at that. And you could have a little test run anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Councillor Gardner?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. With a fantastic response that we've already had from our community about the news that we sadly had to cancel our sparkle, the response on Facebook was absolutely fantastic. And I'm sure, again, we will have that same response with the news and about Remembrance Sunday and about how that needs to be changed. There is a very growing movement on Facebook about the 11 o'clock stand outside your front doors. And that's a very strong movement at the moment going around Facebook and it's been shared throughout Hainault and on social media. So I think carrying on that message would do us a lot of favours and get on the back of that. As for, I'll just give you an example for cadets, MOD and some of the police that I've spoken to. They are all limiting any uniform and wreath layers at all. There'll be hardly any representatives from anyone and I think it's a very wise move. My only concern with livestreaming to the pubs, et cetera, is that the last thing we need is we are asking people not to come and pay their respects. The last thing we need is people going into the pubs and clubs and having a drink and showing our respects and then coming back out. Unfortunately, that could happen, especially if the weather wasn't very nice. Unfortunately, that could happen, especially if the weather wasn't very nice, they'd all be staying in there. I think live streaming is definitely the way to go, but as we know with Covid, the situation can change on a penny. So we have to just be ready for any situation. But I think every, all the work that everyone's done on this new remembrance is absolutely brilliant. So I just move that we, we accept this and carry on.
It is a changeable phase. You know, we, we're on Plan C, but we could well see that we'd be on Plan D before we actually finish.
Yeah.
Nineteen has got point one and point two. Could I? Could we propose them together, Sandra? Because we seem to have gone on to discussing nineteen point two without actually receiving the feedback. So can we, can I propose that we receive and note the feedback for Remembrance Meeting held on the 24th of September? And also to agree the plans for Remembrance Sunday? So if I propose that, could I have a second, please? Councillor Gardiner and all those in favour, will you please show hands? Thank you. Item twenty on the agenda is consultation, Public Health, NCC, Health and Wellbeing Services. To agree a response to the consultation on the Health and Wellbeing Services, which is on pages forty two to sixty on your agenda pack. Has anybody got any comments that they'd like to make? Sandra, have you got anything you want to say about this, though?
No, it could be another one that I work through and circulate the suggested responses. We have only gotten till the sixth of October to do that one, but it's a bit more of a straightforward questionnaire than the one I'm planning.
Okay, councillor Gardiner, you'd like to make some comment?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. These questions are really, really wide and covers a wide spectrum of services throughout. And I think the clerk is well versed in and perhaps going through these and, and doing a corporate response. I mean, obviously it says individual councillors, if they feel the need to, it is always there, but some of these questions would be hard pressed for people to have knowledge of and filling correctly. So if the, if the clerk wants any help whatsoever, I offer my, my help, but I'm sure the clerk has, has can sort this one out. But the office there, if needed.
Thank you. Thank you. Right. So what's the proposal then that we leave this to, to Sandra with some help from Sandra if she needs it?
The same as the other one, that you delegate authority to me to submit a corporate response. And I'll just circulate it before it goes to see if anybody else has anything they want to add.
Okay, so would somebody like to propose that? Sorry, councillor Jackson?
Madam Mayor, one or two of our councillors, I would have thought, could have some input into this. Obviously, I was thinking of councillor Gardiner herself has one of her children has certain needs. Also, we have Anna Sawston. You think one or two of them are like councillor Hamblin. The family may, may be able to put input, input into this because they may be finding problems that they cannot either access certain services or whatever. Why don't we approach one or two of our councillors?
Thank you. Councillor Gardiner?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. That's kind of what I was getting at, councillor Jackson, without wanting to hog the show once again. I have, yes, I have experience of being a service user and a service giver and like I've said, Clark, any help that you want to pick my brains or anything, it's there.
Okay, great, thank you. Right, so councillor Reading, were you going to propose that we delegate this to?
I think Jason Smithers is going to say something or propose something.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, I mean, this, this survey is really for anyone to fill out. It's not just for local. A local council as a corporate body, you know, you could all have your own individual opinion on this and send it in. You know, but if, if you feel that it's better to have a corporate response that Sandra puts together on behalf of the council, that, that's fine. But, I mean, you know, if, if, if individuals feel strongly about, you know, their view, they, they can fill this in as a member of the public, you know, and, and, and put your view over as an individual rather than as part of the corporate body.
Okay, so what's the proposal now then? That we do it separately individually or are we happy to let, let Sandra do it with help?
I think, I think, Madam, Madam Mayor, I think the proposal should be that to delegate authority to Sandra to do a corporate response. But if any of the councillors wish to have an individual response themselves, they can do that. There's no reason why they couldn't. So Sandra could put together the corporate response on behalf of the council and circulate it round us. But if any member so wishes to put their own personal response in there, they, they should be free to do so.
All right, thank you. Can we have a second for that then, please? Sorry, councillor Gardiner, are you seconding it? Yes, right. All those in favour, will you please show hands? Right, thank you. Item twenty one of the agenda, items to report, an opportunity for councillors to report items and to request future agenda items. No decisions can be made under this item. Has anybody got any items that they wish to report? No, in that case, councillors, thank you for attending the meeting tonight and stay safe. And I will see you in the October meeting. Thank you. Good night.